Good morning. I called order of the July 14, 2020 meeting of the Celine County Board of Commissioners. Will a clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vidrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Weiss.
Here.
I ask that you stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move to the citizens input portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to speak to the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for regular business.
Chairman.
Oh, excuse me.
Sorry, I thought someone else was going to jump up.
Go ahead.
Okay, I just want to.
Name an address, please.
Oh, sorry. Laney Meyer, Slina. I'm still on the bandwagon to support the whole mask thing, so I really want to keep applauding that, and I hope when it comes around to review, you will continue. And I base that on a couple stories, quick ones, years ago when my son, who happens to be 49 now, so I don't remember how many years ago, but pre-teen in there, correlating this to the seatbelt issue, he was fussing. He wasn't going to wear his seatbelt. I said, "Honey, we can't leave. We can't leave until you put it on." Back and forth, back and forth. Finally, I thought, "Hey, this isn't working." So I looked at him and said, "Jason, do you know how much I love you? If I didn't love you, I wouldn't make you put this on. What if you had, we had an accident and you got hurt? My heart would be broken." He put his seatbelt on and never, ever, ever fussed again. My point being, there's some correlation between that and wearing masks. I read about a fellow named Richard Rose just this week. He was an Army vet, nine years. He served in Iraq and Afghanistan, and he was very, very adamant about his not wanting to wear a mask. He said things like, "I'm not buying into that damn hype." Used other words, too, I won't repeat here. On July 1, he was diagnosed with the COVID-19 virus, and on July 4, he died. He didn't get to continue to celebrate our country. So again, I applaud you. I'm going to keep at this, and I hope when it comes time to reconsider, you will continue to support your ordinance. And if there needs to be change, perhaps, but still ordinance to wear a mask. Thank you.
Thank you. Now I'll bring it back to the commission for regular business. First on the agenda is the consent agenda, which consists of tax roll adjustments, accounts payable and payroll, and approval of the public forum agenda as presented. Is there any commissioner who wants, wishes to make a change or withdraw anything from this? If not, we will approve the consent agenda as presented. We'll move to the action items. Item number one.
RFA number 190-20, Form 720, signature and payment of 2020 PCORI fee. Philip Smith Haynes, county administrator.
Morning, Philip.
Good morning, Mr. Chair members of the commission. This would be presented by our human resources director, but she had to leave this morning, so I'm pinch hitting. The PCORI fee is something that is required of the self-insured health plans under the Affordable Care Act. We were actually hoping that this fee would sunset this year, but it looks like it has been extended for another 10 years. It's an impact of about $946 and some odd cents. My understanding is that this will be paid from our employee benefits fund and then netted out against our benefit trust, and so should not have a budget impact, and would ask that the commission authorize the chair to sign the IRS Form 720 and pay the fee. Be happy to attempt to answer questions.
Questions or comments from commissioners? Is there any public comment regarding this RFA? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve RFA 190-20 by signature and pay the 2020 PCORI fee.
Second motion. It's been moved in second that we approve RFA 190-20, Form 720, signature and payment of 2020 PCORI fee. Further discussion? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign. Motion carries five zero. Item number two.
RFA number 188-20, Resolution 20-2298, Community Corrections Advisory Board Member Appointments. Annie Grievous, Community Corrections Director.
Good morning, Annie.
Good morning, commissioners. Long time no see. Some of you, some of you I've seen. Do I read this resolution? Because sometimes I've read the resolution through the years, and sometimes somebody else has.
Well, oh, there is a resolution here with that.
Yes, there is. Well, I can go over the RFA first.
Sure.
If you want to, and then you can decide if you want me to do the wherethes. Community Corrections is requesting the following people to be, some of them reappointed, and to be new appointments. The appointments are expiring at the end of the month, so we're trying to get that all done. We had Ottawa County had some appointments, and I met with them yesterday, and the city had some appointments, and I sent the letters to those commissioners in that office before a week ago. And so today I'm here to ask you to reappoint Claudette Humphrey, Kevin Ellis, and Millie Moy. They've only served one two-year term, and so they have another two-year term per our bylaws. And then we'd like to request that Susan Montag and Rex Cleary be appointed to the Community Corrections Board to serve a first two-year term. Susan currently works at St. Francis and runs their alcohol and drug substance abuse programs for the youth. We send a lot of youth there, so it's always good to have that voice there and talk about what's going on. Rex is replacing a gal that we worked with at CAPS, Krista, and she left, and so Rex is filling in. He's also a vital part to two of our large grants. We collaborate with CAPS, and so having his voice on the board is critical, as Krista was excellent, and she's in the office, as will Rex be quite frequently, and so that piece really fits well for us. So we're asking that those appointments be made today. I think last week I wasn't here, but there was discussion, do you want to talk about it first and then bring me back next week? If that's what you decide to do, that's fine, too. But I'm here, ready to seek those appointments, please.
I think that we are ready to do something. That'd be my feeling, anyway. Are there any questions from commissioners? Because this, there is an RFA involved here. Are there any, is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt Resolution 20-2298, appointing and reappointing the members mentioned by Annie Grievous to the Community Corrections Advisory Board for a term of two years, ending on June 30, 2022.
Second motion. It's been moved in second that we approve RFA 188-20, Resolution 20-2298, Community Corrections Advisory Board Member Appointments. Further discussion? All of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign. Motion carries five zero. Annie, I don't see any need to read the resolution because it states exactly what we just did.
Great. Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Thank you. We'll move to item number three.
RFA number 189-20, 2021 budget. Philip Smith Haynes, county administrator.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning again, Mr. Chair members of the commission. This is a follow-up to an item that we discussed extensively last week, which is the commission's proposed budget for next calendar year. The action that staff is requesting today is that you review what I have put together, make sure it conforms with what you intended, and then authorize us to proceed with publication for a public hearing to be held on August 11. I will also note that we did receive correspondence from Central Kansas Mental Health Center, and I have passed a copy of that to each of the commissioners at the dais. With that, I won't belabor the point. I'd be happy to answer any questions or receive any direction from your commission.
The only question that I have, I guess I just don't remember it clearly, but the pavement at Roden Bridge for $150,000, did, we didn't remove that? I don't remember the conversation.
My understanding is we didn't, and we would, I think there was a consensus, a majority consensus on the board, that we would keep it in there, but look at it when the presentation comes to us.
Okay. And in other words, we would have to still approve it.
Right.
Even though it's in the budget, doesn't mean we have to spend the money.
Right.
Okay, I'm good with that. I'm good with that. Other commission comments?
I would sure like the board to reconsider Central Kansas Mental Health's 11,000 additional monies for next year's budget. I think it'd be a big disservice if we did not fund them, their requested amount. They're in great need, and if you read the letter from Central Kansas Mental Health, it's kind of hard to disagree with that request. So I'm lobbying my fellow commissioners to go ahead and approve the $11,000 increase for '21, which was denied a week ago today.
Further comments from commissioners?
I understand my fellow commissioners' thoughts, and I appreciate the letter from them, but, you know, we funded everybody else the same as the year before, and I think everybody's having tough times, so.
Commissioner Shadwick, I'll disagree with you on that. If everybody else was having a difficult time, they would have requested more money. And this is a live case example with increasing suicides in the community, increasing needs, caseloads, on and on and on. I still think it'd be a very good, cheap, inexpensive investment in the community.
I guess, I guess if you've taken the time to come today, Kathy, we would, if you would like to say something, you may. If not, why? Thank you for coming, and state your name and position.
I just, it is, my name is Kathy Mosier, Executive Director of Central Kansas Mental Health Center. I thank your consideration and review of our budget request. The only thing I would say is that since I was here presenting the last time, we were focusing on 2019, which is what we project for our requests, and now we have more information with the damage that COVID's done, and to our community, to the needs of mental health in our community, and to our center's operations, having to completely transform operations over to telehealth and equipment and all different kinds of strategies to keep up with all the guidance from CMS, federal, state, and local guidance. And we are an essential healthcare service that sometimes gets lost in the shuffle of healthcare that we are on the front lines. We're basically the ER for mental health, and we need to keep being able to provide that. So all I wanted to do today is make sure that you have the facts to make sure that you're making decision on the latest facts, and since our position has changed, I just wanted you to have that. So we will make adjustments according to whatever you decide today. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Kathy.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question of the administrator. Some of the expenses that Central Kansas Mental Health has incurred as far as going to equipment and such for their telemental health with the COVID, is that, are they able to recoup that through the Federal Cares Act?
Or the Spark?
The Spark.
So I'll talk about that a little later in my county administrator update, but the Coronavirus Relief Advisory Committee that you all appointed last week has met. The state has sort of divided that process into reimbursements and direct aid plan, which is more programmatic in nature. The reimbursements are, at this point, limited to the county, the cities, and the school districts, but we do plan to, my sense after the committee meeting yesterday is that there is a plan to open up the direct aid plan to a broader spectrum of institutions in the community, and I see no reason that Central Kansas Mental Health wouldn't, excuse me, be one of the folks that would be welcome to apply for that, but there's no guarantee of funding in that process.
That having been said, with $11 million, I would say there would be probably a pretty good chance that $11,000 could be recouped right there, or $10,000, I don't remember the exact number, but any other comments, questions?
If we put it into our budget and made it part of Celine County's response to COVID, would it be easier for us to recoup that money?
Because you're talking about the 2021 budget.
That's right.
And all of the expenses that we're recouping have to be expended by December 30 of 2020.
Right. Thank you.
I'll take it a step further. Our budget is to be approved August the 11th?
Yes, sir.
And the Spark Committee will have their information forwarded to the governor on August the?
By August 15. It should be before this commission also on August 11. That is our plan.
I'm just wondering out loud if that would affect anybody's judgment if we could make the change at that time, if they were so inclined to award Central Kansas Mental Health Center a number?
Certainly, you, the commission can make changes to your budget at the time of the final budget hearing. What you cannot do after publication is increase the mill levy, but you could certainly, I mean, $11,000 is relatively easy to find within a 50-plus million dollar budget. So if you decided on August 11 that you wanted staff to shift money from someplace else to that expense, we could certainly accommodate that.
Mr. Chairman, I want to get the budget finalized. With that being said, I would like to add the provision, I guess when we're ready for a motion, to add the $11,584 to expenditures of Central Kansas Mental Health. Are you ready for a motion?
I suppose you can make a motion, and then we'll have further discussion.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we amend the 2021 budget to include to Central Kansas Mental Health Center the amount of $11,584.
Second motion. Okay, it's been moved in second that we add $11,000, or the number that Mr. Commissioner Weiss has stated, to the 2021 budget.
So the language basically is to add the 11,000 to our proposed budget, correct? Not amend the budget because we have not amended, we have not set a budget yet? Can you help me out, Phil?
I would say that's correct. I mean, technically, a budget amendment is an action for the current year budget, and we're talking about a prospective year budget. So what you're doing is directing staff to adjust the proposal?
And then adopt.
I am not against their, the $11,000. I am against the process here that I think if we can wait till the, till the Spark Committee says that, you know, perhaps there could be $50,000 in there for CKMF, you know, and maybe there's not going to be anything, and then at that time, we could add, assuming that we're doing it before the deadline, that we can add it back in there at that time. That's, that's my feeling.
In reading, if I got this right, and maybe Kathy could help, but in reading this, some of the, some of the expenses has been loss of revenue, which they cannot recoup. That has nothing to do with, with the Spark Act, correct?
That's correct. The federal guidance on the use of coronavirus relief funding is very clear that the funds cannot be used for loss of revenue, to replace lost revenue.
And that's, this isn't loss of revenue that's on there, that they're asking here for, is it?
21 budget.
I understand that, but loss of revenue, the cash register didn't ring for $10,000. That's what I'm saying. It is, they have lost equipment, or where did the paper go here?
Well, as I understand it, there are really three balls up in the air here. One is a request to increase the allocation from the county's general fund to Central Kansas Mental Health in the amount of $11,584, and that would be prospective for 2021, and that would be, you know, something that would presumably sort of set the basis for future years as well. The second item is expenses that Central Kansas Mental Health has incurred to date based on their response to the COVID emergency, and that would be between March 1 and current. And it looks like that amount is around $237,690. And then the third piece is this lost revenue piece, and that's the piece that I think will be problematic for the Coronavirus Relief Advisory Committee to deal with based on the federal guidance. But, yeah, I think there's really three, three separate things that we're talking about.
But my, go back to my question, I mean, they would be eligible for some reimbursable funds through the Spark Act, according to this, or not?
Not for reimbursement. Reimbursement is specific to the cities, the county, and the school districts, but they would be eligible under the direct aid plan. One of the things that their direct aid plan could be used for is to essentially refund them for extraordinary expenses. So it's like a reimbursement, but not a reimbursement within the context of what we're discussing.
I'm using the wrong word, reimbursement. They would be eligible for funds.
They would be eligible for funding, yeah, but again, that would be, of course, subject to approval by the committee, by your commission, and then ultimately by the state.
And my point is, I don't know why we can't wait till that point that we clarify this. We'll know if they're going to get some money. If not, we can get, we can hand the 11,000.
Mr. Chairman, just so, I understand Commissioner Weiss's motion, is it, your motion is to add that to the budget, and then we'll have a separate motion to okay the budget? Or is that, or is yours one motion to do both?
No. No, there'll be another motion.
Okay, all right. Well, it sounds like we've probably got a majority that wants to do that, so if we could.
That being what? Add it back in to the?
Add it back in.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Would it be possible to have the clerk reread the motion?
Well, it was, I don't have a full motion from Commissioner Weiss originally.
Well, try it again, Jim, just for clarification. I'm sorry.
I make a motion that an additional funding of $11,584 be expended to the Central Kansas Mental Health Center for the 2021 budget.
We had a previous motion on the floor. Did we need to remove that, or, I mean, are we fine doing what we're doing here now?
Yeah, my interpretation of what just happened was that Commissioner Weiss was clarifying his motion for the clerk. There was a previous second from Commissioner Sparks, which I believe stands, and so I think Commissioner White was technically out of order there.
There you go.
Story of my life.
There you go. So Commissioner Weiss was simply clarifying what his motion was stated as, and?
So the original one is still out there?
The original one is still on the floor. That having been said, the motion, do you still want it reread now again, or does that clarify?
Yeah, clarifies.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Now, to move on, we're approving the budget as presented now, and, but the second, I mean, the final one is August 11. So I'm, my motion is going to be to move it on, but do I, is my motion to approve it as presented?
I would think an appropriate motion would be to direct staff to publish the budget for public hearing on August 11 with the amendment that you just adopted, or the addition that you just adopted.
Mr. Chairman, I move we direct staff to publish the budget for final reading on August 11 as presented with the changes made by Commissioner Weiss.
Second motion. It's been moved in second that we approve RFA 189-20, 2021 budget to be published. Is there further comments or questions? Actually, I'm probably getting ahead of myself a little bit. Is there any public comment regarding this? It is an RFA. Seeing none, I'll bring it back then. And call for the question, and all of those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign. Motion carries five zero. Item number four.
Appointment of Eureka Township Treasurer. I'm Cheryl Blake, Deputy County Clerk. The previous treasurer of the Eureka Township resigned, and Greg Andrews has agreed to fill the expired term, which is through the end of this year. The township trustee and treasurer are on the ballot, the primary in the, in the general ballot, so his term would just then be through the end of this year until new officials are elected.
Any questions? I'll take a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move we appoint Greg Andrews to serve as treasurer on the board for the Eureka Township.
Second motion. It's been moved in second that we appoint Greg Andrews to the treasurer's position on the board of Eureka Township. Further comments? All those in question, or all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both same sign. Motion carries five zero. That's the end of the action items for today. We'll move on to informational items. Item number one.
Idol Fund Report. Jim DeBois, County Treasurer.
Good morning, Jim.
Good morning, commissioners. I wish I had wonderful grand news to tell you. Second quarter earnings on our idol funds, we only accrued $55,124.38 compared to last year, which was $233,743.95. So for the second quarter, we're in a deficit of $178,619. I guess the good news to this is that we've worked very diligently, and as a team, we were able to get were able to get $262,289 for the first and the second quarters. The way it's going now, if there isn't any more changes to the economy, will still surpass the 2017 interest earned of $319,000. So all we could do is cross our fingers, hope the economy does well, and go forward. So with that, I'll stand for question.
Comments from Commissioners, questions? Thanks for the bad news, or the potential good news. We understand, think so.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number two.
Pretrial Stats Update. Andrew Pelant, Pretrial Program Coordinator, County Corrections.
Good morning, Andrew.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm going to give the quarterly update on the state of the pretrial program and stats that are going to be through June of this year. There were 33 placements on pretrial services in the month of June. Our pretrial program, we had a meeting recently scheduled with the district court judges, and the meeting was just a state of the program to go over the first year and a couple months, and some of the things that we were trying to move towards, and some of the changes, or if there's any concerns on the judges, and just to kind of touch base with the judges, we've had to cancel that since then, and I'll try and get that rescheduled in August so we can go over it with the district court judges. As of June 30th, we've had 142 clients who are actively being supervised on pretrial supervision. 19 are currently in custody. 206 have had their charges dismissed or have been sentenced, and through the life of the program, 109 have had their pretrial bond revoked. When district courts shut down most dockers due to the COVID-19 concerns, our pretrial program was still completing risk assessments and sending reports to the court. So over about a month and a half, when the majority of the dockers were shut down, they were still doing first appearances, and so because they're doing first appearances, we're still doing screenings at the jail, we're still going over there and meeting with them at the jail, and sending over reports to district court judges for consideration for pretrial supervision. During the months most affected by the shutdown, April, May, and June, we have had 77 new placements in pretrial services with reporting conditions that vary. Jail days continue to be saved, and services that were available previously are available to clients throughout those three months. Services we continue to offer or refer out into the community include connective behavioral groups that we offer at Community Corrections, drug and alcohol evaluations and treatment, mental health assessments, mental health therapy, medication management, temporary housing or sober living housing, case management, et cetera. We have a mental health support group offered weekly at our office by ISO Cindy Davis. I have a couple of pretrial clients that I have touched base with Cindy, and then she also helps coordinate case management through the Mental Health Center, Central Kansas Mental Health Center. Pretrial has funds available to cover assists with costs associated with all those services. There have been 476 placements on pretrial supervision through June 30th of this year. If these defendants were unable to initially post their original bond and pretrial supervision was ordered, it had a potential impact of $40,647 jail days saved at the Slane County Jail. And the way I word it that way is, I think I usually preface this when I address the Commissioners, is that there's always the potential they could have made the original bond before we had a chance to go over and then assess them. So the jail days saved, you'll see there, it's a potential impact because there's always that chance they could have made bond. Now, through the pretrial assessment and the reports we give to the courts, the courts either could significantly reduce the bond based on the pretrial supervision, given them more of a chance to bond out, or give them OR bonds, which would, with supervision with pretrial. So June accounted for 7,390 of those days. And then number five, Program Tool Validation Update. I have been working on completing and implementing a scoring guide when completing the pretrial risk assessments to ensure accuracy when scoring defendants on potential risk factors. I am almost finished with the scoring guide and will present it to Director Grievous for implementation if it's approved. And with that...
Andrew, last, just, I don't see the number here, but you say 33 placements on pretrial in this month of June. How many were there a year ago? Do you know roughly? You recall?
Roughly a year ago of June, we would have been around for only about two months at that point. Probably similar, if not more. I think at that point, where the judges and our program was still trying to kind of feel our way through the defense that we're placed on, but I would say probably around the same amount, if not a little bit more.
Okay. Other questions from Commissioners? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioners.
We'll move to item number three.
Emergency Management Update. Michelle Barkley, Emergency Management Director.
Good morning, how are you all? I will try and keep this short. So I wish I had more to say, that I accomplished more between April, May, and June, but we are on day 124 of COVID, so that is mainly what my office has done. We have included a few couple projects to kind of break up the life that is COVID. So first, I wanted to go over kind of an overview of what the office has accomplished. On May 26, we extended the local public health order for another 60 days. I will be back in front of you next week to extend it for another 60 days based on the influx of case numbers, and also to ensure that we continue to get resource requests and test kits from the state. Resource requests so far that we have ordered have been medical PPE, non-medical PPE test kits, and we did put a request in for contact tracers. However, Jason decided to go a different route, using and repurposing more of his staff. So a breakdown of the resource requests. We have serviced over 37 agencies, both first responders, medical, and local businesses. We have gotten two shipments of the Strategic National Stockpile. I have received 98 cases of medical and non-medical PPE, and actually, the numbers have updated. I've ordered 2,000 test kits. Now, that doesn't necessarily mean that every single test kit has been used. We're, based on the spike that we had, we realized we didn't have enough on hand, and we were having to wait for those shipments to come in, so we decided to pre-plan, and we've got a couple staged at several different testing sites. The chart on your right is just kind of a breakdown of it. I know that's kind of hard to see, but in yellow, the majority that we requested have been masks. A little breakup from COVID, severe weather or lack of, if you've noticed. Actually, this is the second longest year where we have not had a tornado in this region, being the Wichita Office Services, which is 26 counties. If we make it until August 20th, we will be tied for first, and so my fingers are crossed because I'm not in the mood for a tornado right now. Rural fire calls, breakdowns, in red you'll have your fire calls, in blue you'll have your med calls. They serviced 140 calls between April, May, and June. We have a summer intern in our office, which I am very grateful for. He started on the 19th, then we have him until the 7th of August. He has assisted the sheriff's office with the UAV grant for first responder training that they requested action for in front of you guys a couple weeks back, and he's also helped with the ordering and distribution of resources. As you saw in a previous slide, my office is covered in boxes. And on a different note, our deputy director, Bernard Botson, did receive his master's degree in Emergency Management and Homeland Security in May. And that's about it. Any questions?
When you initially started your report here, you said you hadn't, didn't have a lot to report on. It sounds to me like you've been pretty busy.
Well, it just feels like a lot of the same.
Well, I mean, again, thank you very much to you and your department. It's the same as the health department. I mean, you guys are the front line in all of this situation that we're in now, and your efforts are greatly appreciated and recognized, and you know, you're over there in the basement, so to speak, so we don't see you a lot. But, Michelle, thank you very much for your efforts, and those of your staff, and relay those to your staff.
Thank you.
So I'm proud of you, and proud of what the emergency preparedness office does for Salina County. So other comments from Commissioners? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move to item number four.
County Administrator's Update.
Phil?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission, Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator. Just a few items today. First, the Coronavirus Funding Advisory Committee did meet yesterday for the first time, as I mentioned earlier. We did that meeting primarily on the Zoom platform, thanks to some really hard work from our IT staff in getting that all set up, and so I appreciate that. That appeared to work pretty successfully. We livestreamed it to the county's YouTube channel, so the public can see those. We did, or the committee did approve letters to the cities and school districts yesterday for the reimbursement funding, and Bernie Botson from Emergency Management went out and personally delivered those to the cities yesterday afternoon. I also got them to the schools electronically. And we did also file a guidance interpretation request with the state to determine how much of our FEMA money we have to spend versus how much we can claim as a reimbursement from the coronavirus. That was some conflicting guidance, so we've asked the state to clarify that. We will be meeting again next Fri, sorry, excuse me, next Monday. We've got a regular 11 o'clock on Monday meeting schedule that the committee agreed to yesterday. There are a couple of state webinars this week that staff will be attending to continue learning more about this process. The second item is that we've talked quite a bit about the radio project, and at this point, as I mentioned, we do have a recommendation from the consultant. We would seek to have a joint meeting between your commission and the Salina City Commission on that radio project to talk about the consultant recommendation, and so would ask the commission to look at your schedules for next week and the Friday of the following week, July 31st, so 20th through 24th and 31st, and let either Linda or Hannah know of your availability or conflicts you have on those dates. Another item, yesterday afternoon, we received a legislative platform request from the Kansas Association of Counties, so those are due back to KAC on August 7th. So if any Commissioners have any ideas that we need to discuss, and then get to the KAC for inclusion in their legislative platform, I think it's been rather easy this year to kind of ignore the legislative process in face of all the COVID pandemic, but the legislative process is critical. I'll be interested to see what comes out next year regarding our budget and whether they amend the tax lead. And last but not least, I mentioned a couple of weeks ago that we had our insurance renewal and did not require commission action, but we actually need the chair's signature on one thing, which is a copy of our cybersecurity policy to move to that new carrier that's less expensive, so I just wanted the commission to be aware that we'll be requesting the chair to sign that. So that is all I have for today, and I'd be happy to answer questions.
I have a question on that, regarding the insurance. If memory serves me, last year when we were discussing this, didn't the insurance situation, we were talking about changing, but doesn't that come before the commission?
We reviewed the record, and we did not find any presentation last year. Two years ago, you did do a request for proposals for the folks who shop the insurance for you, so you, the county uses Assurance Partners as our, what I'm going to call our broker, and then they sub the insurance out to an actual insurance company. And so our understanding is that that broker agreement is what is approved by the commission, and the actual insurance agreements have not been approved by the commission in the past. So it's only the actual insurance agreement that is changing, not the broker agreement, and that's why we did not bring a formal action before you, but did let you know.
So Assurance Partners is still brokering the thing for us?
Correct.
And that was what they proposed or brought forward. Thank you for the clarification. That eases my mind a great deal. Any other questions? All right, thank you. Item number five.
Commissioners' Comments.
Anyone have anything? Item number six.
Announcements.
None that I'm aware of. All right, we'll move to, it looks like we're going to have an executive session, attorney-client privilege, and I'm not sure how long...
Sorry, 15 minutes is requested, Mr. Chair.
For the attorney-client privilege, okay?
Mr. Chairman, I move we recess into executive session under the attorney-client privilege exemption to the Kansas Open Meetings Act for 15 minutes and reconvene in this room at 10:01.
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we recess into executive session under the attorney-client privilege, and come back in here in 15 minutes. All of those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, we're in executive session. Okay, we are back in regular session, and I might add that there was no action taken from that, and we will be looking at a second executive session, and I would take a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we recess into executive session under the employee, employee-er negotiations exemption to the Kansas Open Meetings Act for 10 minutes and reconvene in this room at 10:11.
Second motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we move into executive session for the employee-employer negotiations. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, we're in executive session. Okay, we're back into regular session, and I will say that there was, is no action being taken from the last executive session, and if no one has anything else, I would take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we adjourned today's meeting. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, we are adjourned. Thank you.